The December 2021 USD 350 Board of Education meeting. The order, welcome visitors. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
The only one is our auditors, they're tied up. Since we moved the meeting back to seven, they're tied up in Maxville doing their audit reports. So we'll just throw them on the agenda whenever they get here. We don't need to do anything formal.
Mr. President, the board approved the agenda as presented.
Seconded and seconded, let the board approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 I oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing to add. Your report from the consent agenda. Mr. President, the board approved the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded, let the board approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 I oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Patron comments. Anything not related to COVID policies? All right. Business items, we'll skip the financial audit until the auditors come. COVID protocols.
I know we have several folks here coming to speak their minds. I'll just address the board and everybody here watching on the video. With our current situation, you know, right now, if we have a situation where somebody's been exposed to COVID, our rule is with medical guidance, within six feet of someone for 10 minutes. So if they're within six feet of someone for 10 minutes, they're identified as a close contact. There's other situations that could happen. Boyfriend and girlfriend are smooching, but it's less than 10 minutes. That's obviously being exposed to the virus. So as far as here at school, our period of time is exclusion from school for 10 days. As long as there's no symptoms, they can come back to school on day 10. We do have the option for students to take a test every day, and if they're negative, they can come to school. That's been working very well. To keep kids in school and not at home all the time. The county rules, we don't have anything to do with quarantining students. We have no authority to tell students they have to stay at home, or anybody in their family has to stay at home. Our only authority is here at school. They can be at school, whether it's a kid or a staff member, whether they can be here or not. Our testing program has kept lots of kids in school. Understands some are hesitant to do that. If I own my own business and my kid tests positive, and now I'm quarantined because my kid's positive, that's hardship on my family. I can see that hesitance from some. And we've had several not do the testing for that reason or other reasons. A particularly difficult situation is when we have a household contact. If I live in the household, that there's a positive case, I'm going home to that positive case that has COVID active virus every day. There's no test to come to school in that case. So that's 10 days for that person to be cleared, and then I have to be excluded for another 10 days. So that becomes particularly difficult when we have a sibling or family member that is a positive case. Our mask situation, we have that 6% threshold. If we have a lot of active cases and quarantines above 6%, we have the mask required for two weeks. We've offered the option for families to opt out of that. So with all of this, we've been doing our best. You know, we have 400 people in one location. That's different than my friend's business that has 30 people in a building twice the size of this. They can spread out, we cannot spread out in the classroom very well. So our situation is a little bit different than your situation might be at your workplace or in your home. So it makes it particularly difficult here. Our goal has always been two things, keep everybody safe and keep kids in school. That's been our goal all along. People have been great with this. I guess one rule I've always had as a school administrator is if I'm making people mad on this side, and the people on the other side are also mad, then I'm probably making the right decision. Now, that's kind of tongue in cheek, but this is one of those situations where there's no one right answer. So whatever we do, somebody's upset. And it is important that we're safe and we are on the side of caution, because this is dangerous for folks. But I also think we cannot ignore, and we have not been ignoring, the fact that keeping kids out of school is a bad thing. There's times we have to do that. If I know somebody's been exposed to the virus and very well likely may have it, letting that person come into the classroom is not smart. But keeping kids at home is also a negative that we can't ignore. And we need to protect our staff and other students. So our best, we've done our best to follow the guidelines. We've got guidelines from CDC, from KDHE, from county health. All of those guidelines, especially the ones with our state and nation, are one size fits all. For a high school in New York City or an elementary school in St. John, the guidance is the same. So I think we've done a pretty good job along the way tweaking that guidance to fit our local situation. An example is, all of the medical guidance says, wear masks 100% of the time. We don't feel we need to do that 100% of the time. We've made the decision to only do that when we have to. Bottom line is, we have to get back to normal. That's what we've talked about as a staff, and what is normal? And no masks and no quarantines will feel pretty normal. We don't have to worry about that at all. The virus may be here for another year, or two, or five years, I don't know. But once we can get to that point where we're not keeping kids out of school, keeping kids at home, it'll feel pretty normal. So taking steps to get there, I think, is important. Aaron and I had a good conversation on the phone the other day. I'm not going to say all of his words, I'll let him decide.
I'll let you.
But bottom line, he's frustrated that his family's been in a situation where his kids have been kept at home. He's not the only one. There's been a lot of situations where we've had to keep kids at home. And we don't want to do that. We don't want that situation, but we do have people we need to protect, and we can't let that explode in our school and have to shut down. So we've had good conversations about the situation. And we can agree to disagree. I've had multiple conversations with other people. So I think we've done a good job of being able to communicate, express our concerns, but not attack, or accuse somebody of wrongdoing, or anything immoral, or illegal, or anything crazy like that. So we all have the same goal in mind. We want kids in school, we want everybody safe. We have guidelines to follow. And so I guess I would like to turn it over to Aaron. I know a lot of us have the same concern, so it'd be good if Aaron could speak to that. We don't need to hear from, you know, the board has business to do. We don't need to hear the same thing over and over. So if you guys support what he says. So Aaron, I guess with that, I'll turn it over to you. The board has seen the letter.
Right. Yeah, I don't plan on reading that. I figured it circulated well enough that everybody had a chance to see that. I've talked to most of you guys. I mean, I appreciate you guys doing everything that you have done to keep the kids in school and putting their safety as a top priority. You guys have all been transparent, and I appreciate that. I guess for me and for 26 other families that represent 70 students in the school, it's frustrating, obviously does. I mean, especially maybe it's different for me, the fact that I have three kids in elementary school, and two of which are in three-year, four-year preschool. So I have one in the morning, one in the afternoon. You know, they're quarantined, and I mean, they can't go to daycare then. But I mean, the testing to stay in school, I mean, that's fine. It's inconvenient. I mean, if there's two kids, they're testing every morning, that's fine. It doesn't make you late to work, it doesn't make kids late to class. But if you have 30 kids, you know, that end up having to swab every morning to go to class, and then kids are late to class, we're late. I mean, I work downtown, we're late to work, and then we test for 10 days, and they're negative the whole time, thankfully. So far, we've had that. But I guess throughout the whole thing, you know, we've been told to follow the science, follow the science. Well, it seems like the science changes every other week. You know, if we keep following the science, we'll be in the same position when my second grader's a senior in high school, probably. And I don't want them to grow up thinking that it's normal for them to have to wear a mask in school, you know, or that it should be on their conscience that they might inadvertently get somebody at home, or at the store, or somewhere, you know, sick, because that's human nature. We're all, everybody's going to get sick, everybody's going to carry diseases, you're going to spread it to people whether you know it or not. And I know you guys, obviously, like you said, work outside of the county or the state, the federal guidelines. But whenever we can have everybody go to a football stadium, have 80,000 people in it, all drinking and screaming and having a grand old time, no mask, no social distancing, we can go to interest banker, and it was 20,000 people, do the same thing indoors, you have no clue if the person sitting right next to you for the past three, four hours had COVID, and then you take it back, take it to work, and nothing's done about that. I mean, nothing comes on the news to say, hey, if you're in this row of this seat and you step by this person, then you need to quarantine. You know, it needs to get to the point where the quarantine, the contact tracing, if you have symptoms, then be tested. I mean, we don't do this for influenza, for RSV. RSV hospitalizes 58,000 kids a year. And we don't contact trace for that, or make kids wear masks. My kids get RSV every year. This year, obviously, because of all the quarantine, the guideline, the mask, RSV came in the summer instead of the winter, like usually it does. But there's still a fair share of other, you know, colds and apparently influenza back this year too, I guess, from what I've been told. But I just got a list of things that I put together, directly off the CDC's website. So none of this is made up by me. I don't, I'm assuming they're accurate. I mean, it's a government document, it should be accurate. So as of December 2nd, there have been just over 7 million cases of COVID in children, zero to 17 years old, making up 9.5% of the total child population, and 17% of all the COVID cases in the country since January of 2020. As of October 10th, 2021, there have been 1.9 million cases in the 5 to 11-year-old age group. 94 COVID deaths were also reported in this age group. The 94 deaths from COVID made up 1.7% of all the deaths among US children in the 5 to 11 age group. I'm not going to, I don't want to try to sound insensitive, or that a life doesn't matter, because every life matters, but unfortunately, we can't save every life. And I mean, that's not our job to do that. And I don't wish that on any parent or anybody that outlived their kids. So the leading causes of death in children 5 to 11 in 2019 were accidents, unintentional accidents, 969, 525 with cancer, 274 from congenital malformation, 207 from homicide, 115 from heart disease, 107 from asthma, 84 from influenza, 66 from suicide, 56 from stroke, and 48 from septicemia. So from October 3rd of 2020 to October 2nd of 2021, there were 66 COVID deaths in the 5 to 11 age group, the same number as the kids who committed suicide. But for hospitalizations for kids, zero to 17. From December 4th, from the beginning of the pandemic, December 4th, there have been 5,034 hospitalizations. According to the CDC, these rates are similar to the pre-pandemic influenza rates, and the severity is also comparable among children hospitalized with influenza and COVID. For March 2020, August 21 to August 2021, there were 562 kids in the 5 to 11-year-old age group hospitalized with COVID. 68% of them had other underlying conditions, one or more. The top one being chronic lung disease at 29%, obesity at 25%, with a body mass index of 95th percentile or greater, and neurological disorders at 23%. Since the beginning of this pandemic, since January of 2020 to December 8th of 2021, there were 757 deaths involving COVID, 1,170 deaths involving pneumonia, 176 deaths involving COVID and pneumonia, 189 deaths involving influenza, and 1,827 deaths involving pneumonia, influenza, or COVID. So based off of all those numbers, and a population of 74.2 million kids under the age of 18, as 9,000ths of a percent of all of the COVID cases in children resulted in death, 700ths of a percent of all the child COVID cases resulted in hospitalization, and 8,000th, 10,000ths percent of the total population of kids under 18 have died of COVID, and 600ths of a percent of the population under 18 have been hospitalized with COVID. So because my main thing is, especially right now, everybody five years up can go get vaccinated. Everybody 16 and up can go get a booster shot. The argument that these kids need to mask up and quarantine and whatever else is the argument that they're doing this to protect mom and dad, or grandma and grandpa is, I mean, invalidated now. Because anybody can get vaccinated and have eight to 10 times more, you know, or less of a chance of developing a severe response to COVID, or catching COVID in general, you know, eight times less chance that they get vaccinated. So I mean, that's on everybody. If you want to get vaccinated, you can get vaccinated. That's great, that you're right, you can do that. So kids don't need, you know, it doesn't make sense, but people who are the least likely to have severe complications from COVID, be hospitalized or die of COVID, are being treated like so much different than people in the higher risk category, who are the people who are going out to concerts, who are, you know, going to ball games and living their life. Like if it wasn't for the fact that I have three kids in elementary school, I probably wouldn't even know COVID existed still, because I just, I don't see it really in my everyday life. You can go to Wichita, I mean, it's just complete man. I mean, I'm happy to just stay right here in the middle of nowhere and not see any of the people there. But I guess that's my main thing. And on top of the, you know, unnecessary quarantines and wearing masks, you know, the emotional, the mental strain it's putting on kids that are happening to wear masks now, and have to isolate from their friends. There's another article from the CDC about suicide attempts in kids. And since February of '21 to March of 2021, the suspected suicide attempt emergency department visits were 50.6% higher among girls aged 12 to 17 years than during the same period in 2019. And among boys aged 12 to 17 years, suspected suicide attempts increased to three point, or increased by 3.7%. Among adolescents 12 to 17 years old, the average weekly number of emergency room visits for suspected suicide attempts were 22.3% higher during summer of 2020, and 39.1% higher during winter of 2021 than during the corresponding periods in 2019, with a more pronounced increase among females. During winter of 2021, emergency department visits for suspected suicide attempts were 50.6% higher among females compared to the same period in 2019. Some of the researchers have cautioned about a potential increase in suicides during the COVID-19 pandemic on account of increases in suicide risk factors. Young persons might represent a group at high risk because they might have been particularly affected by mitigation measures such as physical distancing, including a lack of connectedness to schools, teachers, and peers, barriers to mental health treatment, increases in substance use, and anxiety about family health and economic problems. In addition, average emergency department visits rate, rates for mental health concerns and suspected child abuse and neglect also increased in 2020 compared with 2019, potentially contributing to increases in suspected suicide attempts. I know you guys are doing the best that you can with what you have, and you got, I mean, at the end of the day, you got to keep all the kids safe, and I mean, because that's what you were elected to do. So I just wanted to shine my perspective onto it, and just a little bit of facts, straight from the fact holders, the CDC. Take that as you will. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. I do have some suggestions for some potential policy changes. At this point, I would not recommend going completely away from everything 100%. You know, I guess if we are on the side of caution with our laws and our land, if we make the speed limit 20 miles an hour everywhere, that's going to save a lot of lives. And it's not necessary to do that, but it's also not necessary to say, we're not going to have no speed limit anywhere. So at this point, following the guidance and taking steps toward normal, I think, is important. So some things here, you have on your, you're supporting documents there, call your attention to page 28. So the current period of exclusion is 10 days. And again, we talked through that, and they can test daily and come to school. This change would fit within KDHE guidelines that they've tweaked a bit, would be returning on day seven. It's not a huge change, but reducing that to seven, I think, would be an important step toward not, you know, keeping kids out of school for fewer days. Now, the student or staff member could choose to test all seven days and be in school, or not do the testing except on day six, test once, and come to school on day seven. That's one change we could make that would fit with the guidelines. That would not be a departure from the guidelines. As far as identifying close contacts, let me preface this by saying, I guess, why are we looking at changes? Well, we have to get back to normal at some point. We've had a lot of situations, and Aaron asked me this, and I don't have hard data on this, but how many kids do we have? What percentage of kids have we quarantined, or staff and students? Have we, I say quarantine, knowing we're not quarantining them, we're excluding them from school. What percentage of people have we identified as close contacts, kept them out of school, and they developed symptoms or test positive? It's very, very low. We've had situations this fall, we had a big blow up with our, started with our volleyball team, we had several kids test positive, but it was all at once. It had spread, and then we started the testing and found it, but once we identified close contacts, they either stayed home or tested to come to school, there was very few cases that popped up. We had a situation with our second grade, just within the last month, had to identify the close contacts, using our six feet for 10-minute rule. We had none of those kids develop symptoms or test positive. We, I take it back, we had one kid, but it was on the same day, so it wasn't like it spread from that. So I guess I bring that up because we're being very careful about this. We're going 20 miles an hour everywhere, and maybe we can increase that speed limit, is where I'm going with this. If we can quarantine fewer kids that we don't have to quarantine, we're learning as we go, we're better off. And again, if we know a situation where everybody could agree, we probably don't need that kid spreading the virus around, we can do that. But so this would be one step here, rather than six feet, change it to three feet. So if we're within three feet for 10 minutes, then you're identified as a close contact. In our experience, I think that would still keep everybody safe, staff and students, and keep fewer kids out of school. This is a departure from the guidance. This is not KDHE. KDHE guidelines do say that in school, we should keep kids at least three feet apart, but their close contact rule is six feet for 10 minutes. So this one, again, would be a departure from the guidance. If we're wearing masks, we've had situations where kids are wearing masks, and we go to lunch, and we're not wearing the masks, or you're a positive case, and I'm wearing a mask, but you're not, now I'm identified as a close contact. Frustration and misunderstanding with that, but if the masks work, then we should recognize that. So if our current policy says that both of us are wearing a mask, there's no quarantine necessary, a change could be that if I'm wearing a mask, I'm not a close contact for anybody. That's a departure from the guidance as well. The timeframe that we're doing the testing, Aaron kind of alluded to this about, I have to have my kid there at 7:45, I got to be working at 7:30, the kids riding the bus, we don't have those kids that are testing to stay, ride the bus, you know, we don't want them here at the end of the day, and now we're testing them to see if they're positive, and now they've been here all day. But that is a hardship on folks. So allowing parents to drop off their kid at whatever time they need to, and kids can ride the bus, and they test when they get here, or when we're available to test. So it's just a change in what timeframe we do that. KDHE guidelines say kids should be able to get to school, it shouldn't be different for those that ride the bus, and test daily, doesn't say when. So this would not be a departure from the guidance. If somebody has had COVID and tested positive already, our guidance says, or our protocols say, if you've tested positive in the last three months, you're not a close contact, you're exempt from any of that. KDHE says six months, I'd recommend changing that to six months. So if I've tested positive for COVID in the last six months, and I'm identified as a close contact, I don't need to worry about anything. So there's five tweaks to our policy that I think gets us closer to normal, and I don't think puts us at any more risk, based on our experience. Three of those five, I think, are no brainers. They fit with the guidance that we have. Two of those are a bit of a departure from the guidance, and again, back to my point about, we're already going against the guidance by not requiring masks 100% of the time. So we're already making some of those decisions.
Josh?
Yes?
Do you feel like we can get the kids further than three feet apart? In the average classroom? Or are there really no close contacts?
Probably not. No, maybe half of the classrooms. It's easier in our secondary grades, depending on the class, but no. Three feet, yeah, most of the time, three feet is doable, six feet is not.
Did you ask three feet or something?
Yeah.
That's, are we?
Three feet, we can get pretty close.
Can we, like, do away with close contacts by saying three feet?
I don't think we can do away with it in secondary, but I think we can be really close to doing away with the close contacts with the three feet.
Because that would eliminate a lot of the quarantines.
Correct.
And one of the things we want to continue to do, if we can, is to have, like, you know, group projects, the best practices for education, and we don't want to discourage that necessarily. So that would break that three feet barrier in some of those projects too. So in those cases... So in those cases, we'd still have contact tracing.
But it would be a significant reduction, not like 50%, 70%? How much would we need?
50%, I guess.
Okay.
And again, we're not talking about willy-nilly, just making this up. We've been sending kids home that have not ended up testing positive or getting sick. So we've, we've, I don't want to say unnecessarily, but the guidance we had, we were doing the best we could, but in our experience, we're sending a lot of kids home that in hindsight we didn't need to.
My caution on the three feet is, I just don't want you guys to think that if we go to three feet, we've done away with contact tracing completely, you know? There's still going to be some, it's just going to be significantly less.
So explain to me again, just so I'm clear. If a student is wearing a mask, and if they are within three feet, you're not considering them as a close contact, you got to go home, right?
If, yes, if the board chooses to make that change, yes. That's what I've outlined as one of the potential changes here.
What if somebody's had the antibodies since they've already had, Josh? Are they still singled out, if that will count?
Um, I don't know how we know if they have the antibodies. Right now, the guidance only says if there's been a positive test. So if I know, if I've had a positive test in six months, I don't need to worry about any of that. But outside of that, we don't know if somebody's had COVID. I don't even know if they're doing the antibody testing anymore. I don't know enough about that. There's a couple other options on here that I don't recommend at this point, but maybe we end up there at some point. I know there's other school districts that have, if they identify close contacts using their six feet, 10-minute rule, as long as the student or staff does not have symptoms, they just wear a mask and come to school during that 10-day period. They continue to have no symptoms, it's done with. That, I can't recommend that, that departs too far from the guidance. And then another school district, I've seen their policy basically doing all of the things that we're doing as far as the contact tracing, but it's only a recommendation. You say Carl's a close contact, we call the parents, Carl's been a close contact, he can stay home for 10 days, or he can come to school and test every day, or whatever you guys decide, do whatever you want, come to school. So there are schools doing different things. I'm not making those recommendations at this time, I just wanted you to see there's other things out there that people are, other school districts are doing. I have no idea how it's going for them.
How is close contact figured right now? I mean, as far as, you have so many test positive in the class, how do you actually hit who's actual close contact, just by the seat of charts?
Through the seat of charts, and talking with teachers, and...
Talk to the kids and test positive.
And honestly, it's not a good process. We have elementary kids that they, they go to lunch, we know who they're sitting by at lunch, and then they go to PE, who are they around the PE? Everybody. Then music and MTSS, they're working with different kids each day. It's, it's not a perfect process by any means, honestly.
This also isn't just about the kids.
Yes.
Concerns with our staff.
Have you talked to the staff much on...
We discussed it in our staff meeting the other day. And then opinions vary, it's, I guess, like our, our community is, so opinions on both sides of things. But I do think it's important that we take steps towards that normal. You know, I don't see CDC and KDHE changing a whole lot the rest of the school year, and that's hard for folks. We don't see a light at the end of the tunnel, we're just going to keep doing this. And if we, we can take some steps that I don't think are going to put us more at risk, I think that's a better situation than just waiting till the powers that be tell us what to do. Because again, their guidance is one size fits all, and we make decisions for our people.
How big of a spike did we see after Thanksgiving? Just to give an idea of what may be after Christmas?
It wasn't, really, our spike was right before Thanksgiving, really. We didn't see, it kind of leveled off. We have very few cases right now. So our options, I guess, with changing any policies right now, you can choose to change these now, I've given you five situations, or five parts of the protocols we could change. I think with policies slower is always better, let people digest any change. We consider that before the next board meeting, and make a change next board meeting, whether it's this or something else, or you just table it indefinitely, or you choose to do away with all of it.
Would you be able to provide, say we pass your changes, would you be able to provide us hard numbers from what it was to what it is that night, the change in quarantines and whatnot, if it gets us headed in the right direction?
That'd be difficult to do, just because we're so up and down. It's not, I couldn't say, like, during this two-week period, we, we had this many quarantines, this many positive cases, and then after Christmas, it'd be difficult to quantify. Give you a good idea, maybe. But if we, if we chew on this, for, till the next meeting, really, we're talking about two school weeks this week, and then we have Christmas break, and we have one week, and we have our next board meeting. So it's not like it's a huge timeframe to, we have to do something right now, but it's up to you all.
Well, I want to try what you suggested, just, it sounds like it's better from where we are, and I'd like to try changing them. Maybe it won't be the answer, but it sounds better than what we've got now.
I agree.
If we, Josh, we try this, and our numbers spike, would we, above the 6%, would we go back to masks at that point?
Yes. Our current protocols say if we're above the 6%, we're doing the masks.
Is that mandatory for everybody?
No, still have to opt out.
Okay.
That'll be in there.
Still not an opt-out for staff, however.
Correct.
Staff can, I mean, staff has the right, but...
Where's the proof on that mask? Where is the proof?
Yeah, I think the proof for you all need to be provided. Is this a part of a pilot program? Like, which plan is this? Is this in the pilot program?
Especially when you say departure from the guidance.
I'm kind of curious.
So you're stepping away?
Because the pilot program, you can't opt out of the testing. It's all a part of the program that you all got into.
Yeah.
So is this a part of the, like, the next phase that you're describing and explaining? Is that something in the pilot program? Or is that just something that you made up, or did you get it off of somewhere, or...
No, we're, we're trying to take steps towards normal.
I think normal is just going back to normal.
Yeah.
And just dropping it all. I mean, no matter what, the flu is going to be around, it's just the strain of the flu. It's always going to be here. It's just whether or not you let the fear get to you.
We're trying to get to the point of normal without straying too far at any one point in time. We have to watch out for the kids, we have to watch out for the community, and unfortunately, in this age of age, we have to watch liability-wise on the school, too. But biggest thing is keeping the kids in school. I mean, we have to get the kids in school as much as possible, and so we're trying to get to that point.
I keep hearing, not just from St. John, but from other schools in, in Kansas and out of state, including suburbs from Wichita and Dallas, where I have relatives in school, that the masks work. I understand they're a thing. I personally have a real difficulty using a mask because of my other breathing issues, but if it works, why are we fighting so hard having the kids wear them? I mean, the kids in my family that live in areas that require them, it's just a matter of fact for them. They get ready to walk out of their, their family home, and the masks go in their bags when they go on their places, when they go to church, when they have class concerts, when they go outside to play, the masks just automatically go on. It's a part of their life that they were just choosing. The parents don't like it, but their kids, especially the ones in, in Texas, have not missed a single day of school, and haven't had to do any modified schooling, and they started wearing masks back in, in March of when this first came up. So I know it's not a popular idea, but it's a proven idea, so. I don't have any problem with guidelines to keep us following the CDC and KFPE and others. I just think that the masks work, and we need to keep that as part of our, of our process.
Can I say something? What about the teachers that have to keep the kids, have their mask on in class? Like, they struggle to, I mean, I struggle with my two-and-a-half-year-old, five-year-old, when I take them to the doctor, because I have to wear one there. I can't even get them to wear one for 20 minutes because they keep pulling it down. So I just don't feel like that is even going to be any type of a solution, because they're not, if you're not wearing it over your face completely all the time, the whole time, what is the point in making them, you know, half-wearing it? And then, like, the whole, okay, well, we have people, you're okay now to vaccinate from 5 and up, so then why can't you have your kid then vaccinate if you choose to? Or have them wear a mask if you choose to, but making, I won't let my kid wear a mask. I will absolutely not do that. I don't think that's fair to them, to the teachers, or having to, I mean, the consequences of wearing one, I just, I, I just, that's not going to work. For me personally, I will not let my kid wear a mask.
And I think that is part of the rebuttal, you know, in the, in the family members that I thought it was not up to the parents whether they let their kids do it or not. They understood that we're going to keep school in session, therefore, your kids will be wearing masks. And those kids that just, I mean, that's just part of their life, if it's accepted, the kids accept it, the teachers accept it, and their schools have not been closed. So I think part of that is mindset, part of it is our expectations, or, you know, like I said, I don't like to wear a mask, and I've had my shots, and I isolate a lot because of those things in my choices. But I think if there are some kids that I see in our school district who still wear their mask, we're out there, so encourage it. So if it works, why not do it?
I think kids wear masks because they're told to do it, that's why they comply, because, you know, you tell them that that's their normal that they have to grow up with. But there's a difference between wearing a mask for an hour or two, or from 8 o'clock in the morning till 3:20 in the afternoon.
That's not okay.
Let's see, like, you know, if you guys vote to have masks on for two weeks, why don't all of you board members and the principal, everybody wear a mask for two weeks from 8 to 3 o'clock, and you see how you get along with it? Take it off for an hour when you go to recess, and take it off for an hour when you go to lunch. You all are about all in the agronomy field, outside working and stuff, how would you like it? And you think about the kids that are in the classroom that have to wear this, like, it's not okay. It's psychologically not okay, and it has effects on kids for years to come, and it has effects on adults, it has effects on everybody, and it's not okay what it is doing.
Most of your masks that you're using either has an airway recicide because of the surgical, it is made for droplets, it's, what, 95% infected for bacteria, we're fighting a virus. A virus is .1 microns. What's the mass do? .3 microns, 95% success rate on .3 microns. Virus, .1. Do the math, please.
It's, the bacteria, when you wear the mask, you're harboring that bacteria up against your face. It cannot leave the mask. But the virus, it secretes out your eyes, out your nose, it's in the air, it's in your fecal matter, for Pete's sakes. It's, it is literally, it, it floats, but when you, when you're trying to protect yourself from a virus and you have a mask on, it's like throwing sand through a chain-link fence. It doesn't work. It just, there is so much science and proven facts that masks do not protect somebody from a virus. But what it does is it makes you sick because of the bacteria that harbors against your face. The pneumonia, the strep, the influenza, and so much of what kids and people get because they are wearing the masks on their face. And it's, it's really sad that information is all out there, but you don't see it because of what people are getting fed through the propaganda and the media, and it, it's, it's really sad. It's sad that kids have to take the effects, and they're the ones that get punished for it.
So I guess our options at this point are, we table any changes, or we have a motion to change our current policies.
I'll make a motion to change policy. Josh explained?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second that the board approve the changes as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side?
Aye.
Motion carried. Calendar adjustment.
Thank you all for running. Thank you, appreciate it. So we missed, I can't quote you today, one day in August, maybe, for air conditioning. We had to cancel abruptly, and then we had the week of September 13th where we were out for COVID. Our calendar was set up where we had... Our calendar was set up where we had about five extra days above the minimum. So we need to make up one day, for sure. I would recommend, at this point, for an action item, December 20th, we have down as a half a workday, so it's half of a contract day for teachers. Identifying the 20th and 21st as a professional development day. The idea is that they would have that time on their own, whether they want to work at home or at school, or what they want to do on those days or other days, with the idea of being ready for remote learning. If this thing blows up, we just cannot cancel school again. If it gets really bad and we have to shut down, it needs to be for one day and then we're remote. So they need to be available or ready at the drop of a hat to do remote learning if it gets really bad. I want to do that. I want to get to that point. We want to keep the doors open, but... So we get to count those two days as one. That gets us back to zero on the minimum. And then I would recommend, just as a precaution, I guess tentatively planning on adding two days in May. So instead of the 17th being the last day, it would be the 19th for students. I don't recommend taking formal action on that part now, just because it may get bad. We may have a bunch of weather we're dealing with, and we have to make another calendar change. Let's just tentatively plan on that, and in April, we can go ahead and make that formal. Here's our calendar change, whether we need it or don't need it or need more days. But then we can get word out to families if this is a consensus of the board that adding two days in May is what we should do as a precaution. We can tell everybody, put that on your calendar, don't leave yet, we're adding two days, so. Any questions about that?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve adding two days professional development on December 20th and 21st.
Second. It's been moved in second that the board add two days for professional development on December 20th and 21st. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same side? Motion carried. Elementary principal.
The board directed me to look at how can we add an elementary principal position back into the mix. Our staffing numbers, I think I shared some of this with you on a Friday note. So really, the main changes that we've seen over time over the past several years, we added preschool teacher. We had two employed by the COOP. They weren't gonna fund one. We thought it was important, and we kept that, so we had to fund that position. We added a half counselor with Kim Volker. She was, we were sharing her with Stafford, and we brought her over. Then we added an interventionist. That position is paid for with our federal funds. We reduced the principal position, reduced half the Spanish position, or, sorry, we we added half the Spanish position because it was half-time, and now we're full-time. She's doing other things. Angie Webb left. We did not fill that position. We've added two aides, and with our tech and music, those positions over time have added a fraction. Gail Cornwell, when she was here, wasn't full-time. Dick Smith was not full-time. It's just hard to, those part-time positions are kind of a unique situation. If we want to hire somebody, it pretty much has to be a full-time position. So overall, we've added 3.7 FTE over time. There's not a lot of wiggle room to reduce that unless we, for instance, get rid of that three-year-old preschool. I don't recommend doing that. So I don't see a lot of options there as far as reducing. Our cash situation, we've done fairly well since 2014. We need to be around that $550,000 mark. That's our ultimate goal for spendable cash. We're at 510 this last year. So we're in a decent cash position. One way I know we can afford principal position, I think we could work it in the mix with some shuffling. But I guess the fallback position would be capital outlay. It's in-state law that we can take custodial or maintenance salaries out of capital outlay rather than a general fund. So we could take a few of those positions, pay them out of capital outlay. The bad thing is that probably needs to be a short-term fix because we have a lot of capital needs. The capital outlay budget gets a lot easier here in three years because our lease purchase comes off. So I think using that short-term plan is definitely workable. So at this point, I could recommend going ahead and advertising for the position. The board's not quite comfortable with that yet. I'd recommend we go ahead and open it, and then we're gonna take applications. I don't know, I wouldn't get an interview, I wouldn't get applications collected in the interview process before our next board meeting anyway. So it would likely be at our February board meeting at the earliest. So I would recommend going ahead and approving, opening that position. We'll get to work on finding somebody. And then if we just don't find somebody, or we decide it's just not financially feasible, we can pull back and hope for another year, so. I think we need to move in that direction still. I think we missed out.
When you fill out for application process, does it have to say that applications are due by? Or can you make it open that application will be accepted until the position is filled?
I usually put an end date, especially on a position like that, just because we want to end up at a point where we've got these applications and we need to move forward. Sometimes when people see that open until filled, then people may hold off on applying, so. With the timeframe we have, I would probably put an end date on it.
I'd like to see us have somebody in that position, but I definitely think if we do have to look at the capital outlay route, that's a short-term, very short-term fix until we can find a way to fit it into the rest of the budget.
I agree. That throws up red flag with me. And I agree, we need a principal. I don't want to rob one, just take the other.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the addition of an elementary principal position for the 22, 23 school year.
Second. It's been moved in second that the board approve the addition of an elementary principal position for the 22, 23 school year. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same side? Motion carried. Okay. Welcome.
Wow. I tell you, that's just pretty good timing. I got lucky. Sorry, I'm running a little late.
Well, I explained the situation, so.
I'm gonna go ahead and let you take one and pass one around. And then I'll start some from the other side. I tell you, it's a little bit further from Maxwell here than I thought it was. I didn't think I was ever gonna find that roundabout. I thought I was gonna end up at Stafford. Aaron apologizes for not being able to be here. He's delivered, we're delivering. He's delivered, too. I'm delivering, too. So we're, he's pretty busy, too. I'm just gonna borrow a corner here by Lisa, if that's okay.
So we're here?
Well, I can do that. I've kind of been sitting for a whole day, so if you don't mind, I'll stand up. I just want to briefly go through the audit report, same format as last year. For those of you board members that were here last year. No changes, basically, which is unusual, because usually, probably, it'll change next year. You know how that goes, but. On page 1 and 2 is the opinion. And remember, do your financial statements there. You hire us to give an opinion as to whether or not you're fairly present in all the trouble. We give you, they're your financial statements. We don't draft them in accordance with the Kansas municipal accounting and housing laws. But basically, do your financial statements. So when we look at 1 and 2, this is our opinion on those financial statements. Two things to note is, number one, is that they're not in accordance with general accepted accounting principles that are GAAP, but they're not intended to be because every, beginning of every school year, you adopt a waiver from GAAP that allows you to use the rate of base. That is allowed by statute. You do that every year. And so we say in there that they're not in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, but they aren't in accordance with the rate of base of accounting, which is the Clayton Law. Does anybody have any questions on that? Because it is a little confusing since it's a dual, dual report. Okay? On page 3 and 4 is the financial statement. And this talks about the, shows that each fund beginning cash receives expenditures and then ending cash. At the end of that kind of cash column, shows compliance with the cash basis law, which basically says that you will not spend or encumber any more funds than you have available. And this is a federal fund. Because federal funds require that you spend it before that you request reimbursement. And I think if you look on there, the only negative is that that's our fund. Yeah. And it shows a negative, but that's what those federal funds work because you're not allowed to get the money and sit on the money. You're, you have to spend it before you have to request it. So at the end of the year, a lot of times, there's a timing difference between when you spend it or encumber it to be spent, and then actually receive the money, so. For the, does anybody have any questions on that? Cash basis report, we should put the negative, but I'll show you where we explained it and that it is not a statutory violation of the cash basis law. Does anybody have any questions on that? You know that your cash went from 768 up to 875, which is good. Shows an increase in your general fund. Basically, it has to zero out each year or come very, very close. The only reason would be if you happen to have a little bit of mineral protection tax carryover from the prior year. Okay? If we look on page, uh... Page 5 starts, and this is the financial statement. They just provide additional explanation and announce items in the financial statement. So again, just, if, if, there's a nice note in there about the budget cycle and the requirements of the budget, how the budget cycle moves, and the time, timing of that. The summary and dentist, only thing you have outstanding is at least 100,000. And it talks in there, and it shows the maturity of that. And again, that's all that's paid off. It'll be paid off in three more years unless you enter. That's the buses in that, and it's listed on the top of page. No, that's the building improvement and then the bluebird bus. I don't know if you've done anything, if you've done anything new in this year?
No. We ordered a bus, but Lord knows when it's coming.
When, yeah, that's when these buses are nowadays. You kind of order, you know. If you look on page, on the page before that, on row 3, where this management is aware of this violation, remember, they're your financial statements. If we're not aware of any either, if we were aware of any, we've required that you report it, you know? So again, that's why it's ordered the way it is. It talks for me about the exception to the cash basis law. Yes, or no? That being federal, that it is not in, that it is not a statutory violation. Does anybody have any questions on that? Note, TM talks about the fine pension plan on page 12, starts on page 12. That's a pretty nice description of the capers. Again, remember, it's a, it's a, it's a brief synopsis of the contributions and stuff, how that works. One thing to note, where it talks about the net pension liability, I think that's on page 13. On page 12, it talks about the cycle and kind of describes the capers. Yeah, at the top of page 13, talks about the net pension liability. Remember, that's the district share that is attributable to the employees of the district for the employer's share of the capers requirement. But that's under current law and under, that's covered by the state for school districts. So that's a commitment of the state. We're not required to report it in your financial statements, but we are required to disclose it. And that's all that is. It talks in there about it not being part of the financial statements. Does anybody have any questions on it? You can see the state is behind a little bit, but they are catching up. Okay? And hopefully sometime in the future, I'll be able to say, probably that'll never be zero. Probably that'll never be zero because you're always adding to it for the current employees. This is based on, you know, when they retire, what their amount, you what, or would be owed on your behalf of your employees. Does anybody have any questions on that? Talks in there about the leased direct commission on the building. I think everybody's familiar with that, that a couple of years ago, that were required. I think in the, to further explain that. That's the top of page. Says Josh is following, I'll try to help him out. Yeah, top of page 14 talks about the leased direct commission. On page 15 and 16, just complies with the budget law. Basically, remember, when you adopted a budget, you did two things. You adopted mill rate necessary to fund the next year's budget. So here, we're talking about 21, 22 budget, and, you know, that you adopted in August. This is the year before. And you're also, you also set the legal maximum expenditures. If you read that top part of it, it talks about. As far as the state's concerned, it's just the total amount expended for each fund in total, not lineups, as we're gonna see here in a little bit. So lineups don't matter as long as you're under, under, on one, I did a amount that drove on.
I got a question, probably for Josh. Is the special education fund, is that the total dollars going to Pratt?
Well, no. That would, that would include the flow-throughs. That would include the amount that Pratt gets on your behalf.
So some of that is, yeah.
Not just the except.
When we get to that line, I want, I want you to stop and tell us.
Okay. If you look on page, oh, let me find it. Page 31, about total 618, total 30 is assessment, 370 is closure. That's money the state gives you that basically is the COOP. So you pass it on to the COOP.
So how much am I missing?
240 is the assessment. Here, this was last year's, 209 and 230, and 386 and 370 is the flow-through.
That's page 30.
Page 3, right. We're looking at page 31, right.
So the assessment is the dollars that we pay from our general fund.
Right.
To the COOP. The flow-through is money that comes from the state to us. We give it to them.
Right. It has to, it's shown in the general fund as special ed state aid, and then it's transferred to the special ed fund and paid to the COOP.
And then the rest of this, we pay for transportation, but the state reimburs- And then the rest of this, we pay for transportation, but the state reimburses us eighty percent for that.
Right.
Which if the state was fully funding special ed like they're supposed to, that two forty would stay in our budget. Would that be correct?
Um, not really.
Okay.
It would indirectly, yes. You know, it costs X number of dollars to operate the co-op. They're not getting what they need from the state, so.
To fund it, so they have to assess the district.
Their assessment would be less.
Right. Okay.
Right. Probably, again, we, we look at that percentage that, like Josh said, it probably wouldn't totally alleviate your assessment, but it would reduce it somehow. The flow-through money is, again, it's money from the state that doesn't affect you. If you look on the general fund, you'll see a line called special ed. Let me find that page number real quick. If we look on page seventeen, special education aid, that's money that the state gives you, and then is transferred to the special education, that you turn around and give to the co-op. In the old days, you know, for us old timers, that used to be paid directly to the co-op and then, but you know, because of transparency and whatnot, they thought it was better. It showed how much was actually the state paid on behalf of the district for that, for that, because you're benefiting from that supposedly from that.
Who's state transparent, guys? They inflate our budget.
Right, right. It inflates your budget. Good questions. Hopefully I answered them, or with Josh, he probably has one. But that's a good question. That includes the flow-through. So again, that special education budget is high because of the flow-through.
Thank you.
If we skip on back, the next thirty, forty pages is take, kind of like what we do there. If you have a question about any individual fund, you can look at the individual fund page and see what the prior year expenditure worked, the prior year lineup was, the received expenditures, cash balance. Just keep in mind that that, it compares it to budget. When you budget that lineup, all the, all that the state's concerned about is the total for each fund. That's why that, that summary fund is more important, because that follows the Kansas statutes. Okay? Page forty-six starts a C fund. Forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, they got the activity funds of the district. The only reason I point those out is to say that this part of audit, we do audit those and they are covered under a audit report. So again, those are all covered. Or to the graphs, which basically just shows the five-year history or trends of the district. You know, capital outlay obviously increased. You know, we, we talked, we saw how your cash has increased. You can see right here where those funds are. It increased special aid, increased a little bit, capital outlay increases, see between the years. Everything else, they're about to say. Josh and Lisa at the end of each year always do, and Marla did the year-end transfers to replenish the cash balances and put the money back in the funds as they see fit and that will benefit the district in the most. I think you all adopted as part of the minutes and motions, it basically proves that they didn't make those transfers. They do a good job of making those transfers. Does anybody have any questions on that? If we look on page fifty-four, the state age on those, it didn't change very much. The next few graphs just show the bar and the general and supplemental general fund revenue just for those two funds. The bulk of the, obviously, their revenue contributes to the, there's your state aid. You see, it has gradually gone up, it hasn't changed much. The big increase is, you'll see here in a little bit, is on page fifty, the next page, fifty-five, shows the general and it will go by function. And again, when we're talking, remember, when we're talking about spending, that's here, we're talking about purchases of goods and services and also transfers. So yeah, you're not talking, you're not talking about going out and buying something necessarily. You're talking about transferring to these other funds for future year, future budgets. And you can see the bulk of the increase, just the past year was in the transfers, I And again, that's attributable, if enrollment is staying the same, then the base state aid for pupil is increasing under the new school financial. The next two graphs just show that as a percentage, that same information. Now remember, like I always tell districts, this is just the general and supplemental. So if you want the total instructional expenditures, you have to look at those transfers and otherwise the bulk of those transfers could be special revenue funds that are heavily instructional. If we look at your budget, I always look at that budget for pupil. And if we look at that for this last year, for twenty-one, twenty-two, your, your instructional expenditures for all funds is, was sixty-five percent and your reported was sixty-seven. So the state usually recommends you try to keep that between sixty and sixty-five percent. Now again, your instructional expenditures are significantly lower than that, but that's because, again, that's just general supplemental. And this is all, this includes the at-risk, the special educational, like we talked about, which are heavily instructional. Anybody have any questions on that? Josh, you want to add anything on that?
Nope.
The next, like the, the page that shows the lines, that's what I was talking about. A good chunk of that, that's it. Page sixty, let's, let's talk real quick about sixty. That shows the increase of federal decisions, which again, I would expect that to be comfortable. You won't have the Sparks money next year, you know, barring unforeseen, you know, anything happening there. The Joffa Asper money, which is federal assistance. And you've already talked a little bit about the extra funds. So again, when, once, you know, you want it to, the federal money's going to stay with us probably for two or three years until you spend all your Asper three funds, which I think those have to be spent by two thousand and fourteen?
Twenty-four.
Or twenty-four. I mean, yeah. Two thousand and twenty-four. So you've got a number of years yet. I don't know what, 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 I think you're operating on. You have to get permission from the state and you have to get allowable expenditures that you can use for that. And so much of the Asper three has to be used for lost learning expenditures, which I don't know how you define that. Have you?
No.
Yeah. I don't think, the state is really, I think they get different guidance from the feds, what is considered law, learning loss. So that'll be a challenge, I think, moving forward. Obviously, if you're adding programs, then if you've got existing programs that you're in hands, you know, proving to them that it's for learning losses, maybe a challenge. Okay? Does anybody have any questions on that? The next couple graphs, page sixty-one, talk about the valuation. It dropped a little bit from thirty-eight to thirty-five. I don't know what the, that was last year's valuation. And then if we look at your enrollment, your mill rate, stayed about pretty flat. Yeah, increased a little bit, but again, I think they do a good job of watching that monitoring that and making sure that, that, try not to increase that many more than you have to. Your enrollment, you can see on that how that's relatively stayed the same. Again, the nice thing about staying the same is you get that higher base state aid for pupil that we didn't used to get. That's been increasing the last couple of years. So that's nice. Even though the enrollment stays the same, it gives you a little bit of strength, I think, to use for, you know, either general fund or transferring at the end of the year, like you're right. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay? The two other reports that we've got there, I think they're effective inside. They're identical to last year, with the exception of changing the date. One of them is called, the single page is the internal control report, except for the name, but it's heading off, we're just required to report. Yeah. Primarily, it's the segregation due to the small size of the school district. Again, that's nobody's fault. That's just the nature of the, and, and. Does anybody have any questions on that? That, I think, been there for years and years and years. Basically, we just, we recommend that you continue to, to review the report, review bills and approve them each, or if you'd like to. The two-page report, one that's tabled deals with, yeah, that is called letter to the Church for Governance, which is obviously the board of education. We're required to report in there if we encounter any difficulties during audit, or if there's a disagreement between us and management, which management basically consists of Josh and Lisa. If we have a disagreement with Marla over how something should be recorded, we never have, never have. So that's good. But we're required to put that in there. We put in there that there were no disagreements noted. If, again, we have difficulty doing audit, we're, we're, we are required to report that in there. Two, again, we didn't have any. We appreciate the, being of service and hospitality that they afforded us the tough days we were out there. We know it's a little disruptive, but.
It's part of the job.
It's part of the job.
We appreciate you guys, the work you guys do.
Usually when you hear audit, you know, you think of being guys. We try not to be, try not to be, I said.
I don't think you've ever been.
Okay, good, 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 good. Does anybody have any questions? That was kind of a whirlwind. If you have any questions on the report, feel free to talk to Josh or even give me a call. But like I always tell people, before they give me a call, be prepared to talk for a lot, because last, again, can talk as long as you want me to, probably longer than you want me to, in most cases. Again, we appreciate being of service. We thank you for your business and, okay. We continue to relate.
Appreciate it.
Okay?
Thanks, Mark.
Number one, you got a motion there? Uh, I'll go ahead and once this is approved, assuming it's approved, I'll file it with the state. I'll probably email Melissa in you with a copy of the report.
Okay.
Or Aaron will.
Right.
Let you know that it's finished. There's a hundred dollar five T, it's same slash, okay, so, okay.
Mr. President, I want the board to approve the two thousand twenty to twenty-one audit reports presented.
It's been moved in second that the board approved the twenty twenty through twenty-one audit report as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was going to say, thanks for sliding me in when I got here.
No, no problem.
So I appreciate that. Thanks a lot. Have a good rest of the meeting. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Senior work release.
Couple of kids requesting to have a shortened schedule.
I have two students requesting shortened schedule. I have Makayla Meyer and Navia Fisher. Makayla has a job at Golden Bell Theaters and it kind of fits in with her career. She's looking at agricultural stuff as far as her career goes. She's been working out there for quite a while. Right now, she's working in the, in the red building where they sell meat on the highway, I think. And then Navia Fisher, working at White's. Her plan's after school, where to go to the military. And she's already set up with a recruiter and everything, so what she needs for that really is just to make sure she graduates. Review both their records easily within that. They should, once they continue to do what they're doing, have those credits to graduate. So I recommend that we approve those.
Mr. President, I need the board to approve the list of students for senior early release.
Right. It's been moved in second that the board approved the list of students for senior early release. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The post same side. Take care.
So I'm going to backtrack on this. This one's not going to be an action item tonight. Phil Martin, our board attorney, is working on, he's got the paperwork pretty much done, but we need to get a, an appraisal of the building. And I told Chad at the bank that we, the district recover that cost since they're donating the building. And we have to get a title commitment report and title insurance, and then we'll move to close, but that'll take a little bit of time. So one of the steps in the process would be approving this, confirmation and acknowledgement of the receipt of the gift. We should probably wait till we've actually received it before we approve the receipt of the gift, so. I had this in here just because I wasn't sure if, if S.J. Bank, they were wanting to get that done before the end of the year, but Chad said, no, there's no hurry. So on another note, our attorney is retiring at the end of the year, at the end of the calendar year, so in a couple of weeks. So we, we've got KASB to fall back on, but we'll need, there's enough things like this that we go through that KASB does not do. So having a board-appointed attorney locally, I think, is a positive thing. A lot of districts just appoint KASB, but, so he should have everything ready for us and we'll probably have to close after he's retired and everything, but he's willing to stick it out, finalize this deal. So really, we should be able to take ownership of that building for the cost of an appraisal and type of insurance. That'll be on the, on the next month's meeting or an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Football concession building.
As you know, we've got a donation from Marion and Juanita Alpers on the restroom facility and concession facility. Their interest was making it more, better accessible for elderly or handicapped individuals. The bathrooms are not the good situation. The trick there is, what do we do? There's not a lot of room to expand to the west. We need to be able to get in and out of there with a vehicle, you know, fix up those restrooms. It's a cinder block building. It's in decent shape. It's not great. So the options are, do we try to find some way to add on to the building, remodel it in some way? Or clear it, clear it out and rebuild there, or build something at a different site. Ideally, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to have a facility that has locker rooms and restrooms and concessions, but that's a, that's pie in the sky stuff. I don't see a way to afford that, but as far as fundraising efforts, I kind of need some input on what this board would like to see done with that building.
How long has that building been there? You made them?
I don't know.
I mean, I can't say it's been a long time. It's inside here, is it, it's a building we ran down beside the bathrooms? Concession part of it?
It needs a good remodel. It needs a. It needs a good gut job, for sure. It's kind of gross in there and...
It's all cinder block, isn't it?
Yeah, cinder block and concrete pad.
About to be cleared off, can my be, start new to... That's what you're into with everything concession.
I don't have an idea on cost. If we tried to gut the thing and redo it and make it nicer and redo the bathrooms, are you going to be the same cost as if you just raised the thing and rebuilt?
Can we take Smith further to the east if you want to get rid of the building further?
Yeah, I think you could feasibly put in a 30 by 60 here. The existing building is about 20 by 40. So, give you an idea of how, how much room there is. You can't get too close to the pit there. Kind of boxed in there, but there is some room. Or I can come up with options. I can get a contractor in and give ballpark idea of what's it going to cost to...
I'd like to think bigger picture of maybe purchasing some land next door to the north.
Okay.
Put in some parking.
Right.
And concessions, locker room. See, possible.
Right.
My family sold some money and raised some money in. Maybe you could raise some money to secure, secure a little bit of it. But I think parking may be an issue.
Any thoughts on that?
Are the interior, interior partition walls cinder block too?
Yes.
Okay. It's all cinder block.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
So, not a whole lot of options for...
Yeah, I think you have the concession separated by, to the storage area, and I think it's cinder block wall and cinder block wall, and then between the bathrooms and so on. Just difficult to do any plumbing or electrical or anything in there.
Yeah. Like, I'm in favor of looking at a different building.
Well, we'll get to work on maybe coming up with some potential options there and how much money we might have to raise.
Is, is the city owned the...
The city owns all of that. The city owns the, the football field and everything. We lease it from them for nothing.
Okay. So, maybe going in with the city to, to get some land up there north like Vance mentioned, but then also make it more accessible for the baseball field, and perhaps you could get back to, to having baseball as a sport, or having locker rooms, or getting tournaments, whatever like these.
Right.
Back when I was young, in the stone ages. And maybe get living costs that would, would help with maybe some funding.
Sure.
Or citywide fundraiser or sponsorship or something.
There also is, Vance brought that up, with the additional land, having, you know, discus areas are not ideal. If you've ever been to a track meet, it's head on swivel when you walk around there. So, having some more area up there would be a better situation.
The parking is definitely needed.
If you've got some more land to the north, you could, you could move your shop foot and everything up and bring your concession stand closer to the stadium where the elderly would have to walk twice far.
Yeah.
Now, put it right in there somewhere.
Good point. Well, thank you, guys, for making this more complicated. But it's good ideas. All right. Board member activities.
I'm having...
Sean?
Nope.
Aaron?
Yeah.
Carl?
I just want to thank Mr. White and fax class. Veterans Day celebration was top-notch. And like Josh said in the notes, it's a great learning experience for the kids, and it's, it's humbling for me personally, but great job, great job.
I did hear one student thanked the guy for ending slavery. Off a few wars. We need to look at our history class. Debbie?
We have had a really busy month. We just hired a new director, Dr. Bob Decker, and again, his resignation. As of June 30th, we hired, we interviewed a couple candidates and hired somebody, it would be Megan. I just, Megan Etheridge, she's currently an assistant director there, and we're looking at reorganizing the administrative office, the director and assistant director positions to cover finances more accurately or to make it less burdensome for just one person. We also had a considerable discussion the last two meetings about the use of ESSR funds for retention bonuses, or we're not supposed to call them... Oh, what's the word I want? We're not supposed to call them bonuses for the teachers. So, all of the three schools in the district have given some sort of funds to their teachers, to the special ed teachers and parents in their schools who are full-time, but there were three schools that did not. One of them, because they earmarked up on that funding for a complete new HVAC system, and that the special ed folks were aware of that at the beginning and were fine with the fact, the others came to, the co-op and then asked if the co-op then would use some of the ESSR funds to give those things out of retention funds back to the teachers of the districts that did not determine, did not include them in any kind of, I'm going to just say bonuses, because that's, that's basically what it was. There was a lot of discussion on that. I know that there are some schools that did think it was fair that we used our ESSR funds and included the special ed folks when all of ours got about $500. There was another school that gave everyone $1,000. And there were a couple of schools that gave 250, but it came out of their ESSR funds. So, then to have three schools ask that the money from the special ed co-op though for those people didn't stand well with, with some of the schools. And then the third thing we're looking at, there are a couple of schools that would like to see us reorganize the co-op and have the individual schools responsible for hiring the special teachers and the parents and including them in our staff, and then just having the itinerants out of Pratt, which would, it would decrease the amount of assessments that we gave, but it would increase the amount of work in trying to find and build and train those physicians. So, those are the three things we're working on, Mike Allen.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. Administrative reports.
I feel like my time should already be up. One of the things that we've been going over district-wide here in the last year and a half or so is looking at our students and evaluating our students and the teachers do this, kind of to determine which of our students are higher risk. And we have a set of criteria that we use and a couple of scales, but I've been working on that and looking at that data, and right now, we're starting to, we're, the staff's starting to look at strategies to help identify those students and figure out how we can, how we can close that gap with them. So, you know, over the past year, two years almost now, year and a half, we've, we've had a lot of issues with social emotional decline, I think, or struggles, social emotional struggles. So, I think this, looking at this data and analyzing the risks and really trying to focus on some of the kids that we identify as higher risk is going to help us in that regard. It's also part of our KISA process.
I did, I had on my report also, but while we're here, just pull it up here. So, what we look at is attendance behavior and course performance and social emotional, so ABCs. So, yeah, I'll be there. So, attendance behavior and course performance is kind of an early warning indicator of, if students are struggling in one of those three areas, one or more, or really any four, one of those four areas, they're less likely to graduate. So, if we can identify those kids, at least by sixth grade, the ones that are struggling, either just getting to school or with their, their interpersonal relationships or their course performance or their behavior, if we can intervene early, we'll see benefits down the road. So, if you see our elementary attendance, you know, we've got about 4% at the high risk, behavior about 4, course performance about 11, social emotional about the same. Their secondary, 10% on attendance, about the same on behavior, 17 on course performance and a little higher on the social emotional. Some of that social emotional data that we're giving is not, is not, yeah, not, it's kind of skewed to the high end of identifying more kids, high risk. So, we work through that, but...
But, you know, kind of what we're going to do at the secondary level is we're going to identify staff that students have a good relationship with now, you know, and so those staff members can, can work with those students. And I've asked all of the students which staff members in our school, and it can be teachers or bus director or custodians or whatever, who do you trust if you have an issue? Who do you want to talk to if you're having problems? And so, by doing that, we can kind of pair those students up with a staff member that they trust rather than me just pulling them in my office or Mrs. Hacker or whatever, so that we try and build those relationships and identify those causes for some of those high-risk factors and help bring those down through building relationships. And I also have a handful of kids who said, I, I don't have an adult in the building that's, that I feel that comfortable with. So, part of what we'll do is figure out how we can make those connections. So, hopefully through that process, we can really bring those risk scales down, and like Mr. Meyer said, if it, if we identify those in the elementary and we start doing that as, as we move into high school, we should be able to take all of those, or a good portion of those risks, those students at risk, and reduce that and have a much better learning environment, be able to target their learning needs instead of spending as much time on, on the social emotional side of things. But certainly working on that, that's, that's definitely a need. One of the things that I think I'm pretty proud of, a lot of our teachers this year, we've done a lot with school community collaboration and education, and part of that, to be quite honest, bringing Natalie Clark on, she has a, she's done a lot of things with her classes that have gotten out into the community and used our community resources. Mrs. Mixon with some of her classes have done some community resources. We've been, you know, just taking her business classes she had or her technology class down to the, down to the EcoDevo workspace that they have, kind of explained how you can start a business through that if you wanted to, having guest speakers come in, really trying to focus a lot more on that community collaboration, because that's an important piece of us being successful, is the community being in and our kids having buy-in to the community both. Along with that, this spring, we'll be hosting a career fair where our students will get a chance to talk to people from our community who have businesses and kind of find out what different careers are available in our communities. And the hope is, we help them identify career interests and possibly identify needs for what we have in our community so some of those students come back. So, those will be, that career fair will be a big piece of what, what we look at this I'm going to skip through some of this stuff. The school projects that we've been on, you guys, I think maybe you toured the greenhouse? I don't know if it was done at the time. We have the greenhouse finished. You see the pictures there? Mr. Delf has set up already. We have some seedlings started, the tilapia tank is there running. We have our fish in it right now, and his class is going to build a tiered growing apparatus above that tank, so there'll be plenty of room for other classes, and that'll be a good learning space for a lot of grade levels and stuff. So, looking forward to that and seeing other curriculum areas get involved in that, in the greenhouse projects. Residential carpentry, going to town on that house, you know, the demo on it took almost all last year. They're putting some walls up, putting some sheet rock up, getting things, getting insulation in, so things are starting to move a little bit faster on that for semester end. And Mr., Mr. Moritz, when he started that, had a, a goal of trying to be done a lot sooner than what he's going to get done, but Mr. Meyer tried to tell him that he was being a little too ambitious, because not only are they doing the work, but he's taking the time to teach the kids how to do the wire even, and stuff like that. So, I think it's coming along pretty well. You can really start to, start to see it take shape with the walls being gone and new walls being put up and concrete poured back in where the bathroom's going to be, and you can really see those things start to, start to shape up. The two, the two egress windows we put in the basement have totally changed the, the look of that basement, made it look more like a house down there. Our business and fax department right now are working together to start a kind of a school store, which would be a coffee shop. During the summer, Ms. Patterson went and got certified to be a barista, and so they're looking at starting a coffee shop, business class, business essentials class, who kind of run the business side of it. Mrs. Patterson's class, her baking, baking and pastries class, making little snacks and stuff, and serving coffee to kids and staff. Right now, Mrs. Patterson's baking and pastries class is doing something just about every Friday and selling snacks to kids during her LS time. Excuse me, and some of those, she's used the proceeds, like to donate to the junior class for prom and things like that. So, anyway, I, good, some good stuff going there, the kids are getting some good practical experience. Got our concert this Thursday. It will be in the auditorium as of now, unless we have something unforeseen, it'll be in the auditorium, so I'd love to see you there. I have a part in it. It's a non-singing part, so you don't have to worry too much about that. Our winner, Kasia has the winter moratorium from the 23rd to the 21st. Our winner, Keisha has the winter moratorium from the 23rd to the 27th, so there won't be any team practices from the 23rd to the 27th of December. Gives families a chance to get out and coaches a chance to not feel like they're pressured to have to coach every day at the break and stuff, so anyway. Got that coming up. Midwinter Classic is here a lot quicker than you would think it would be, coming up middle of January. We have eight boys teams, so we have a full bracket for the boys. We have five girls teams that will play the whole tournament and because with, with a five-team bracket, you can't get every team three games. We invited Reno County Homeschool who has been here before, but they didn't want to come to the tournament this year. We invited them. They will play one game on Saturday, so that every girls team will get the full three games of a tournament. Might not have a clear-cut tournament champion. It's kind of complicated with just five teams.
Five teams is difficult.
We do have Minneapolis signed up for next year, not for this year, but for next year, boys and girls both will come and we'll. One of those, one of those private schools that come to the tournament will probably not be here the following year to make room for them to bring both. So midwinter classic's coming up. It's gonna be a huge week. We're gonna have four games on one of the nights, three games on the rest of the weeknights except Wednesday. And we'll start at 10:30 on Saturday and be done at about 10:00, 9:00 to 10:00 at 9:00. We'll have seven games on that Saturday.
The other teams that bring just their boys, how close are they on contracts so we can try and get both teams here?
I'm gonna, Mr. Nussler's been contacting them and I don't know what the contract status is almost for sure, but. Mr. Nussler's did a pretty good job of, of working on that, trying to get it to where we have boy and girl both.
What boys teams do we have this year?
I'd love to name them for you. Maxville.
Nickerson.
Florida, then. Nickerson, CP.
Sunrise.
Sunrise, independent.
Reno County.
Reno County, yeah. So if we get this thing up to where it's eight boys teams and eight girls teams, it's gonna be a week of crazy for everybody, but I need all of you guys to volunteer. Which we're gonna need, we're gonna need some of that this year anyway, but it's really good for our school to have it and it's good for our town for us to bring that many people in, especially on Saturday when. At some time on Saturday, all 14 of those teams will be playing. All right, any questions? Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. We already talked about that ABC's data. I don't really have a COVID update for you. Numbers are really low right now. We're in pretty good shape. And I appreciate this board's support on all, all of those things, you know, we don't. Our school's not an echo chamber where we just, it's ideology of don't do anything or do everything. It's. We gotta live day to day with this mess and it's not easy. There's a lot of competing interest there, but we're doing our best. Preschool funding, they added three-year-old at-risk to our funding this year, so we should get a little more funding than I wasn't planning on. That's always a nice positive. But we've got kind of a mess of funding, so we hire one teacher, the co-op hires another teacher. And they get funding for our teacher and we get funding for their teacher. And it's just a convoluted mess and how it has to work. And I wish the state would just say, here's X number of dollars per kid for preschool, educate them, but we're jumping through hoops with. A state grant through the co-op and their at-risk funding, their special ed funding, but we're making it work and it's a better situation now than it will be next year than it has been, so I think we've got a pretty good system. We went through our safety fence system, did a test run here when we had the kids out of the building, had our sheriff and police chief here to see the system go. Worked well, got a couple of bugs to work out, a couple of people didn't get a message. The timing on that, I got the message within five seconds of the system being activated. Blaine was probably closer to a minute and a half, maybe Tori was two minutes. We had the dispatch, got the call and got the radio call. Two minutes and 15 seconds probably, so very quick notification, but. Every police officer would have that message inside of two minutes when it's activated. Everybody in the building would hear that and check their email, check their message and know where the threat is, so we're in good shape there. Did have a test run on that. Board president and vice president, we redo that in January. Changeover, you know, we're not having any turnover here, but. It's really the new year for boards of education, so we will have that. President and vice president, so think about that if you want to still have your duties or if you wanna. Have an overthrow. Board meeting dates is the other thing we need to set technically. It's kind of silly to set it, set it in January in my opinion, and we've already got a calendar set. So we already established the dates, we just have to reaffirm them. Food service budget balance, I did include some information here for you. I won't go through all of this, but I've kind of laid out. I just do this every year after we get our audit in our revenue and our expenses and. Where we're at, so essentially it costs us less than a hundred dollars a day to run our kitchen. So anytime those budget issues come up that, well, we could not have school, you know, we could take, have fewer days of school and we'd save on food service. It's that well, it only costs us $68 a day to operate that because of the revenue we get, so. Things like that don't make a whole lot of sense, but. Anyway, last year it cost us about $11,000. And that's because we spent more on equipment. That's one thing, that doesn't show up here. That's not just. Food purchases and salary costs, it's, we do purchase some equipment periodically. The other thing is our drug dog, we've got, I've been working with Providence to get a contract for them to come out. I was hoping they'd get out here before Christmas, but that's not gonna happen, so. Still working with them to get something going the remainder of this year and continue that relationship. That's all I had on my report.
Hey, executive session.
I don't have any executive session items. I'll tell you what I have for personnel. One is my contract for approval and the other one is a resignation from our fax teacher. We needed to discuss those. We can go into executive session or if anybody else had anything else. Otherwise, we can just.
Okay.
Move to the contract.
All right. Resignations and contracts.
You have a copy of my contract on your machine.
She didn't want to discuss your contract.
Oh, yeah, she's here.
Yes, I do.
I thought we lost you. You disappeared.
Oh, I just turned off the lights, yeah.
That's all right, that's all right, I just.
You didn't have to look at me.
So.
Okay.
Didn't you include that in the packet?
I don't remember. I think so. I did last month. It's the same as last month.
Okay.
Hey, do we have a motion regarding Josh's contract?
I moved, we approved the contract for Mr. Meyer as. In the supporting documents.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we renew the contract as in our documents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
F O six sign. Motion carried.
I have a resignation from Mrs. Patterson. So this is her 10th year, St. John High School. She wants to move on to bigger, better things in retirement, so I would recommend approving her resignation. Appreciate her service to the district for the last 10 years. So Lou.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the resignation of Mrs. Patterson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 F O same sign. Motion carried. All right, future agenda items.
Do you have a list there? I'd like to make sure we continue to, and we do all the time anyway with the COVID, what we're dealing with, but it sure needs to be. I think we did a wise decision tonight, but I think also we need to have that in our agenda as far as what we can continue to keep doing. Get back to normal.
Okay. Do we note it?
Okay.
Move to agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We have heard, all those in favor.
From what I heard, I might have.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. F O same sign. Motion carried.